Calumbean's order. Reverend Bravitt, we call upon you to speak.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for all that you have done for us. Lord, we ask that your blessings would continue to be upon this nation and upon this town and upon its leaders. Lord, help us to be unified. Lord, as we come together, and we ask of your favor, we ask of your blessings to help us to lead, give us the wisdom to do so. And, Lord, most of all, Lord, we ask your blessings be upon this night and upon the families of those present. Lord, we ask these things in your son's name, Jesus' name, we pray. Our Lord, Savior, and friend. Amen.
The joint faith, the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I want to welcome Judge Mayo Bravitt for coming tonight to square in the town council, the new town council, and the mayor for the new term. And if I could, if I can get all the old council members and the two new council members to line up right here in front and do it kind of catty corner so you can see. Judge Bravitt.
I wouldn't have a blind side, but I was just asking.
Okay, yeah.
Would you all like a little practice? How are you going to go the oath? I'll do it once so you can figure out what I'm about to say.
I used to. I've seen you enough in court.
I've eaten enough of your food. It will go like this. I state your name, slash, do solemnly swear or affirm, quit, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, split, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, split, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge, split, all of the duties incumbent upon me, split, as a member of the Crewe Town Council, split, according to the best of my ability, split. Do you want so, help me God in this.
I do, yes.
Anybody that doesn't want it doesn't have to put it in. All right, each is a council member. Please raise your right hand. Call me. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Crewe Town Council.
As a member of the Crewe Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Councilman, congratulations. You know what it says.
I was up at the table.
Welcome.
I don't have a ticket, but I can go do it.
For the newbies.
I definitely agree.
Judge, you guys swear me in.
You're right.
That's all right.
It's like getting lost and only had to find him. Aye.
Aye. James Gregory Eames.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor for the town of Crewe, Virginia.
As mayor for the town of Crewe, Virginia.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir. This is a copy of my latest book. Is my looking good?
Yeah.
There you go.
Should I be kind or ugly?
No, it's good.
It's very good. It's good peach for this unless it's worth nothing.
Okay, well, it's worth absolutely nothing.
I don't think so.
All right, you're ready. You're ready. Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for sharing us with the board.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Now that we're all sworn in, you guys start next month. Actually, it's the start of one July. The meeting is not until the second Monday of the month. If you have any questions about any of our courses, it's Wade, the other members of council, or myself, I've already talked to your some. Welcome. Welcome. It's a great opportunity to serve, and if you enjoy public service, this is a great opportunity to make positive difference for the people in your community. Okay. At this time, Robinson Cox and Cox, or excuse me, Robinson Farmer and Cox have an audit presentation. Far away.
Aye. Mr. President, I suppose. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks for having me. And thank you Tiffany for coming to save me down there at the town building where I was scrambling to figure out where to get it.
What's your name? I don't know you.
Aaron Hawkins.
Aaron Hawkins.
Yeah, and so I've worked on the audit with Paul E. for past several years. I'm a partner at RFC as well, and we both were onsite to do the field work. Just to tell you a little bit about the field work itself, you know, there were probably, I think it was probably a team of four of us or so, three or four of us there, several days to test controls, test your balances, and huge thanks to Tiffany and the staff there. It was a very smooth process and very efficient. I am going to kind of go into the report now, and does everyone have a copy of the report? Or have you seen a copy of the report? Okay. Well, I won't get too terribly into weeds of the report itself, but when you do look at it, page one is our audit opinion. Okay, hold on, I'll take a quick pause.
Yes, sir. Do you need a copy of this?
Right, yeah, I'll give it back.
Okay, that's fine.
You want a copy of this?
Here.
Give one of the two new folks here. I don't know.
So what I'm going to try, and I will try to get a little bit more detail now and try to walk you through a lot of what I think are the most important statements in the report, more important sections, and then open it up for any questions that you have. I know it can be a lot kind of immediately. If you see something, you have a question, it comes on your mind while I'm going over it, feel free to stop me. And, you know, after I'm gone tonight, if you're at home reading this thing and stumbling upon some questions, you know, reach out to Wade or Tiffany, and they can put you in contact with me or Paul, and, you know, we'd be glad to take time to answer any questions that you have. So page one is where I'm going to start, and it's where I always begin when I present these reports. And on page one, you're going to see our name, Robinson Farmer and Cox Associates, and it's our audit opinion. And, you know, throughout the rest of these statements, it's really the town accrue's financial statements. Everything that you see going forward after this, you know, everything is compiled from information that we received down in the town. And this is our page's auditors to give our opinion, and it's an unmodified opinion, is what we call it, and it's, in our business, the best that we can give as auditors. Says that, basically, based on our testing, we feel that these financial statements are free of any material misstatement. Put the heads at page four. Really, it's pages four and five, and we call these your entity-wide financial statements. And what these do is they take all, everything of the town, your general fund, your proprietary funds, everything is compiled into, on the accrual basis, these financial statements, on the exhibits one and two. And when I say accrual, it means that we're capturing your fixed assets, your long-term debt, everything. When you talk about general fund and funds, you don't typically include capital assets and long-term debt, and I'll get to that here in a little bit, but on these statements, those things are included. Moving to page six is where you actually see your general fund. And this is your balance sheet. You've got assets totaling about 1.5 million dollars, and your fund balances are about 1.4 million dollars, which is a good healthy fund balance based on, you know, the expenditure levels here at the town. You know, normally I would recommend a minimum of 20 percent, you know, 20 percent of your general fund expenditures as a minimum fund balance, and you guys are well beyond that. So good healthy fund balance. On page eight is where you're going to see the increases and decreases in your fund balance for the year. You'll see that you have total revenues in your general fund of about $2 million, expenditures of about 1.873. Fund balance went down slightly, about a little less than $200,000 from 1.6 to 1.43, which is that same number that we saw on that previous page that just showed you. On page 10, and really pages 10, 11, and 12 are your statements for your proprietary funds, which for you guys are your water and sewer funds. On page 11 is where you see the increases and decreases in those funds, and you'll see that your water fund, and in these statements, we call it net position rather than fund balance, because your proprietary funds are actually centered on a cool basis, where you do see fixed assets and long-term debt, things like that. It's just a requirement of Gadsby's standards that these statements actually do include that for your water and sewer funds. And we'll see that your net position for your water went from about 461,000 up to 631, and your sewer went from about 3.5 up to 3.6 for a total increase in those funds of just about $300,000. Jump a little ahead to page 15, and these are your notes for your financial statements. And these things are now, they run to page 53, and I would guess that 20 of those pages are probably related to your BRS that you guys have, but that note used to be about three pages, it's grown and grown to probably 20-plus pages. But in these notes to your financial statements, you'll find support for the numbers that you saw on some of these previous pages that I've showed you, especially your balance sheets. There'll be notes that cover your fixed assets, your long-term debt, accounts receivable due from other governments, and as well as just documenting your significant accounting policies that you have. Jumping ahead to another section that I feel is important, and also something that I think is easy for you all to get a look at and see, you know, how you perform during the years on page 58. And these are your supporting schedules, and these are for your governmental funds, which for you guys is your general fund. And schedule one is your revenues, and on the next page, section two, is your expenditures. And what these do is they show you what your original budget was by line item, your final budget, and your actual, and then shows the variance, whether positive or negative, to how you perform versus your budget. And you'll see that on the second page of your schedule one, which is again your revenues, the general fund took in just over $2 million with a budget figure of 1.624. And then over on the expenditure side, expenditures were in excess of the budget figure there, by about quite the same amount as the, actually, it's less. Revenues were positive variance of just about almost $400,000, expenditures from negative of 190. And the last page I'll point out in the report is on page 71, which is where you see our name at the top again. And with governmental audits, this is another requirement for us, which is to have our, it's not really an opinion, it's a report, is a report on basically our testing of internal controls here at the town, and if we, based on our test of internal controls, if there was anything that we needed to report as a material weakness or a significant deficiency, which we did not have either of those things. However, I will segue into the separate management letter that we've sent out, which are items that, you know, we think could be improvements in internal controls, but things that we didn't think rose to the level that they would become something like a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And on this management letter, we've got three items that I'll kind of go over. The first one is really nothing new, but the accounting system at the town doesn't have the capabilities of tracking the elements of proper tax collections. In other words, it doesn't have the ability to load in the levy, track supplements and abatements and collections. You guys really have to rely on tracking that information via spreadsheets. And, you know, and that's, you know, it works for you, and I don't think it's ever really created any issues since I've been here for the past few years, but needless to say, it would be a tighter internal control if those things were automated. And whenever someone came in to pay their taxes, not only would it load those characteristics for the day, but it would also be able to deduct from your outstanding balances that you had out there, tracking the system, rather than relying on spreadsheet. The next item was, we noticed that bonus payroll for the year, which I assume was probably, yeah, actually, was holiday bonus paychecks, I think were issued in a just straight amount rather than run through the payroll system, but, you know, obviously, the necessary tax withholdings, which, you know, for us, as in just the scope of the audit, you know, those things don't rise to any type of a material level. It's not something that the financial statements are misstated because taxes front the tail, they didn't pay out on these things, but it's something that, you know, we want to make you aware of, because if the IRS were to ever look at you, they probably wouldn't like that. They'd want you to run through payroll, and I wouldn't want you to, you know, not have to be, point to me and say that in the dell, so that we have that as sort of a recommendation.
Is that required by the IRS?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, for a bonus, yeah, it should be run through payroll, because they consider it earned wages.
Okay.
And, you know, and obviously, you want that thing, it's, you know, for a bonus check, whatever. It's nicer when it's a big, you know, round even number. It's weird when it's, you know, 90 percent of that and some odd change, something like that, so. But you can do the proper planning to make sure that the gross is actually higher so that when you have withholdings, it arrives at the place where you want it to be. Just an idea that I have, but. The third item that we've, that I'm talking about is cash doors. The town just has one cash door for cash collections at the front office there, and, you know, multiple clerks can, you know, receive funds and utilize that cash door. It would be an enhancement to the controls to have each person have their own cash door. Those are the only items that I really had to go over with you tonight, and once again, I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone has.
On the automation thing, we had discussed this before, because I know it's come up before, but my understanding is for us to buy a program for automating taxes, it's like $30,000. Now, is that really practical or necessary?
So, right.
I mean, what we're doing complies with law, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's, you know, it's my job as an auditor to always just tell you what best practices are. I mean, there's a, there's a cost benefit to all the decisions, and, you know, is it something that you're required to do? No. And you may ask yourself, is it something that spending that amount of money, is it, you know, is the risk we're taking by having that, not having that software work, spending that amount of money? Those are decisions that you have to, you know, make yourself based on this cost benefit.
Based on your audit and the numbers that you have examined in great detail, would you assess that the town accrue is being run on sound financial practices and principles?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's the main thing.
Yeah?
No irregularities.
Right, no, no irregularities. It was a very smooth audit.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry, I could, I could ramble a little bit, but it was, you know, I think it was the first time probably in a few years that we've been here to talk to you guys, so I wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence and tried to.
I'm glad you came, because we try to do our due diligence also.
Yeah.
That's great news, frankly.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me. Don't have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good trip. Congratulations, and thank you. Yes. We're all here for it.
All right. Next move, we do the public hearing for the 2018-2019 budget. I get the call here somewhere. The town, the town council, the town accrue will hold a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed budget Monday, June 11, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the conference room at the Crewe Library, 414 Tyler Street. General revenues are projected to be $3,604,978, and our projected expenditures are the same, so we should feel that even. Are there any questions? There are no questions on the budget. Can I vote down? Can we vote down? Good. Take the, I think we need to go and do it, vote down the argument. Very good. With that in mind, I close the public hearing on the budget. Delegations from the public and citizens' comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak? No one wishing to speak? We move on to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council. It may be voted off separately. You have your minutes in your packet, as well as the town council meeting in 14 May, as well as the bill seat and additions. Did we have additions? Okay. Any questions or comments?
I think most of the exception deals.
If the chair makes a motion to approve.
With additions.
With, with additions. Second. Mr. Abell makes a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so. Motion carries. Town managers report.
Thank you. Just a few items to tell everybody about. We finished, the windows were installed at town hall, looked real good, they did a good job. I think we did real well there. I think they're going to be very beneficial to the county themselves in the law room. I know they will. One thing we struggled with was replacing the shutter that were on the building. At first, we thought, let's get some new shutters. We priced those, and we got a quote on that of about $6,500, which seemed a little high to me. So what we did is decided to go back and see what we could do with the old shutters. Tony and his guys have been working, working with those, they got them sanded down, they've done some repair work, so anyway, we're going to reinstall them, repaint them, but I've got to save a little money. I think they're looking, they look fine. We talked, we found a guy, we think straight on the instructions at the airport. Now that we've completed that, we're back in compliance, so we're eligible for future maintenance plans. One thing that we desperately got to do is look at the runway. We had several estimates back in October. They ranged anywhere from 35,000 to 55,000. We asked them to update their bids. Couple of went out and said that they were not comfortable with their bids, that it had been made deterioration. So what they recommended is to bring in to, bring in a consultant or engineer to evaluate the runway and see where we are. That has taken place. We haven't heard back from them yet, but they were roughly estimating somewhere around $100,000 to prepare that runway. Now, we'll get grant funds for that maintenance money, 80 percent, up to 80 percent. So obviously, we're going to have to find some money to repair the runway. If we don't repair it, we're going to lose it. It's just a simple sound. So we'll be talking more about that in the runway. Spring cleanup, we handled that. As I suspected, it was very light. It's not a whole lot out there. Most people now take appliances and metal objects and that type of thing, or other people picking them up and selling them from scrap, so it really didn't have a really heavy week, but we did, we did do some cleanup and hope that helps things around the town. Only other thing I wanted to mention, I should have mentioned it last, last, what month did I miss? Last month? Maybe that's why I didn't mention it. But anyway, we, once again, we got a letter from the Office of Drinking Water, dated May 1st, and I'd like to read it. Dear Mr. Walker, congratulations. Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water is pleased to present the town accrue water treatment plant with a gold 2017 water treatment plant performance award for excellence in clarification, filtration, and backwash. This is the second gold certificate that we've received. We had silver two years ago. You know, I say it all the time about the quality of what we put out is second to none. And again, I'll say it again, you may not like it taste-wise, but it's healthy, it's not going to hurt anybody. That's the main thing, because we're putting out a good quality product. And I appreciate the hard work that we get from, from our operators. They are so dedicated that you just, you wouldn't believe how dedicated they are, so. And they're pretty much down there by themselves, they're all, all on their own, but they're doing an excellent job, as do all of our employees, so I did want to bring that to all attention.
Would it be appropriate to put a little blurb on our utility bills when they go out, that that award was, just take a sentence?
Good idea. Can you make sure that Mr. Gunn gets a copy?
You've got a gold certificate. And silver a couple of years ago. Silver two years ago, gold last year, and then gold seven. Well, we're a year behind, but that's the way they do it, so.
He's got it right here.
Yeah. They're very proud of that award. They work hard for it, and they, you know, they all type of things down there, and it's, but anybody who's never worked in that field of work, it's a tough business, and you would think, well, how hard can it be to treat the water? But the water, the law of water changes almost daily. And if we have a heavy rain, everything changes. And the trick is for them to keep on top of it and anticipate if things happen and then they treat, it's too late. So they have to be, they have to be really good at that, and they all, we just recently had a trainee, got his class four license, Thomas Watson. They're working towards higher licensing, and it's just a good situation. I mean, we've got two plants run by John Rico that we just have a little bit of no problem. We spend some money on them sometimes, but we have to, and we've got, but we don't have to worry about what's going on, and that's, that's really, that's all.
We've had a lot of rain lately. Are the pipes holding up?
Sewer?
Sewer?
No leak. No problem.
No overflow, there's nothing. All right. Any questions for the town manager from members of council? All right, with that in mind, moving to the mayor's report. The Lockstone meeting was held on May 24th at the Crewe Community Center. It appears to have been well attended, looked like there was a constant flow of people going in and out. I was there for a while. They had some people that you could talk to and ask questions of, and they were, they were pretty forthcoming. The 101 Days of Summer started on May 31st, or Memorial Day weekend. It is a period of the highest accident rates, and we want to urge everybody to exercise safety during various summertime activities. You know, so people, people get comfortable in the good weather, and they, they relax too much, and sometimes they're, they're not watching the road when they should be, or watching the lawnmowers when they're cutting the grass. We want to encourage everybody to be safe. We have an accident, a late accident request. The Lockstone folks were supposed to get in touch with Tessie, and there's been a disconnect somewhere, and Mr. Boswell contacted me. The Lockstone would like a motion.
We have a heavy rain, everything changes. And the trick is for them to keep on top of it and anticipate if things happen and then they treat, it's too late. So they have to be, they have to be really good at that. And, uh, and they all, uh, we just recently had a trainee, got his class four license, Thomas Watson. They're working towards higher licensing and, uh, it's just a good situation. And we've got two plants run by John Rico that we just have a little bit of no problem. We spend some money on them sometimes, but we have to. We've got, but we don't have to worry about what's going on. And that's, that's really, uh, that's all I.
We've had a lot of rain lately. How, are the pipes holding up?
Sewer.
Sewer?
No.
No overflow, there's nothing.
No problem. Perfect.
All right. Any questions for the town manager from members of council? All right. With that in mind, moving to the mayor's report. Uh, the Lockstone meeting was held on May 24th at the Prud Community Center. It appears to have been well attended. Looked like there was a constant flow of people going in and out. I, I was there for a while. Uh, they had some, uh, people that you could talk to and ask questions of, and, and they were, they were pretty forthcoming. The 101 Days of Summer started on May 31st, or Memorial Day weekend. It is a period of the highest accident rates, and we want to urge everybody to exercise safety during various summertime activities. You know, so people, uh, people get comfortable in the good weather and they, they relax too much, and sometimes they're, uh, they're, uh, not watching the road when they should be, or watching the lawnmowers when they're cutting the grass. We want to encourage everybody to be safe. Uh, we have an accident, a late accident request. Uh, the Lockstone folks were supposed to get in touch with Tessie. And there's been a disconnect somewhere, and Mr. Boswell contacted me. They, the Lockstone would like a motion, a resolution, or basically a, a motion by us tonight to affirm the previously signed contract between the town crew and Lockstone. I don't know whether they needed to copy the minutes or whether they just needed another affirmation, but with that in mind, I will link the table.
Mayor, I have moved that we affirm our contract with the Lockstone.
All right. And second?
Do they need a roll call bit?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so. Motion carries. All right. Committee reports. Mr. Sis. Not you. It's your last night. You don't want to talk.
And you know, would you? Everything breaks.
Okay. Five asks.
No report.
No report. Personnel.
I want to thank our town employees for all the hard work they do that you mentioned, and also especially congratulate Tiffany, because I know audit time is kind of stressful, no matter how well it goes. So good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for being nice to her.
Mr. Foss is not here. He did send the note, however. He says, uh, to outgoing councilman, I am sorry, I could not be at my last council meeting. It was a great experience. I wish the two new incumbents to a successful term in office. Economic Development.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the HEAL group met today. Um, it's unofficial, but we did not get the, the grant that we applied for. It only becomes official that we didn't get it once everyone who got it signs their contracts and such. Um, so it doesn't look like we'll, we'll be getting that.
Are they going to give us a, a debrief of where we?
They'll, uh, they'll send comments once everyone else has signed their contract.
Sure.
And I'm going to also try to get the, um, successful applications to, to compare, so we can figure out what to do better next time. Our next HEAL meeting is Monday, July 9th.
We have the next town council.
Right, which I believe is Monday, July 9th, um, here at 2:00 PM. The Virginia Grocery Investment Fund, which the town crew supported, um, did not make it into final budget. Uh, that was passed. That was a last-minute cutout, but it, it did not make it down, which is unfortunate. And on the bright side, um, the Minute Scan project that Virginia Tech has restarted, um, they were moving offices and for several months couldn't work on it, but it just started again this past week. And that is it for economic development.
On the tech program, do they have the capability? I think I answered this before. They have math. I mean, we've got maths are as big as this table, but they've got the capability to shoot it.
Absolutely. In fact, I had them, uh, do the, um, blueprints from the headquarters, the, uh, division headquarters.
Yes, Dan. Okay. Because we got the type of stuff, as you know.
Perfect.
All right. Good. Uh, going to continuing business. And continuing business now will need a vote on the budget.
Mayor, I do have a couple very quick requests for the budget, and none of them have much of an impact on the, on this budget. I would ask that from our reserve funds, we allot, we, we take $10,000 from the reserve funds to pay for, because we did not get the HEAL grant, to pay for a kiosk and a crosswalk across 460 from, um, at, at me, from a residential side of town to the X Park, uh, which is something that we've been talking about for.
Right.
Several years, and the kiosk.
Well, council's already, the previous council's already approved the kiosk anyway.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah, it was, it was a budget of $5,000 or some dollars. $5,000, something like that.
Does this, I guess this, does this council need to vote again, or?
Not if the previous council voted on that one. I would just ask for then $5,000 from the, um, reserve fund for the crosswalk. And since it's coming from the reserve fund, it won't affect members here.
Okay, so we have a.
They'll make that motion.
Okay, you're making a motion to take $5,000 from the reserve fund to establish a crosswalk.
To pay for a crosswalk.
Pay for a crosswalk.
Assuming that Beadot's report is still good.
They approved it. Who would do the work?
Beadot.
Beadot will do the work.
That's correct. In fact, I think they required that they do the work.
Don't be paperless.
That's how it works.
Okay. Uh, with that in mind, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
My second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Any further discussion?
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if they maintain it after that?
That is a good question. I don't know. Um, if it's on 460, I imagine.
I would take the word. I got a question. Is that the blue light? Did you got a streetlight or something down there? You go across, especially at dawn. You got to save private hardens. It's dark at night.
We could include it.
Whatever color. If it is a little light, maybe.
We have to pay for it.
We need streetlights.
Make it a little bit brighter when they cross.
Right, that's true. So with that in mind, you want to amend it to $10,000, make sure we got the cash.
If we got the money to do it, you know, that's not bad.
This would be good. This would be good. In fact, might even get a rent on the park and see if they don't want to cuss here. Wait, we just put a crosswalk. We need some better lighting. Wait, hold on a second.
Comment to $10,000.
Well, he, he would.
Okay, the motion has been amended to $10,000 from the reserve fund for the crosswalk. Uh, do we have a second to the amendment?
My second.
All right. All in favor for the amendment, say aye. Motion carries. Or in, all opposed, I like so. Okay, that, that part carries. So now the motion is, uh, to allocate $10,000 from the reserve fund for the crosswalk and, uh, lighting if necessary.
And kiosks?
Well, the kiosk was already authorized by previous council. Well, no, we said 10.
10 for the crosswalk, 5 for the kiosk.
5 for the lighting?
5 for the kiosk, 10 for the crosswalk, and I'm assuming that's including the lighting and making use of the crosswalk.
It's just a little bit of deal, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so. Motion carries.
And then, Mayor, just one more. This one's a little bit more complicated and much less money. I'm, I'd ask for $7. Um. Well.
Where do you want it to come from?
And I would ask that council, members of council be paid a salary of $1 per year. And the reasoning is, um, if a member of council is still paying student loans, um, there is a federal program, the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. And that allows an individual to make payments, student loan payments for 10 years, um, if they're working in public service, either government or nonprofit. And after that 10-year period, uh, the rest of their loans are forgiven.
You're trying to get a loan forgiven?
Well, I'm opening it. I, I already work in public service. It's, uh, it's irrelevant to me, but it's for anyone else who wants to consider it. The issue with the, uh, with the program is you have to be paid by, so it, the city of Richmond, the city of Charleston, any member, even the town of Blackstone, any member who gets paid and works at least, uh, part-time, um, is eligible. What they specifically say is the only elected officials who aren't eligible are members of Congress, and the, um, and you are not eligible if the work that you do is volunteer work. So my assumption is that a salary of $1 per year would satisfy the requirements of, for anyone who's, uh, who's in that position.
Are you sure $1 will cut?
They, uh, when I called up, they said that there is no minimum for salary. There's a minimum, minimum for hours worked, but no minimum for salary.
All right. So we have a, we have a motion on the floor that each member of council be paid $1 per year.
Well, if we're going to do that, let's just bump it up a little bit more.
Well, you can probably refuse the dollar.
You can donate the dollar back or what have you. Um, it's, and I know I just sprung this on everyone, so it, feel free to reject it, and we'll bring it up again at the next.
I think they're spanglby, and we'll bring it up if you don't mind.
I see it as a way to encourage. We're always, um, concerned that young people, younger people than us, don't. Some young people don't participate in these kind of activities, and, you know, that, that could be an encouragement.
It actually could, yeah. Um, particularly with student loans like they have today. Uh, and I'll donate $14 for, for two years, if that's not a problem to me. But, um, any discussion? What do you all want to do?
So I'll donate years, what he's told by.
So it's $14.
I said 7. Where's the 7? I don't know. He said a dollar per year.
7 bills.
I said 7, I was telling you.
Oh, $7.
Should you get your other back in here to watch?
Why would you make it? Oh, well, he's like, he gets all those big checks. They all do that.
All right. So Mr. Mersky, you've made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll suck it.
All right. Finally, the chair seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so.
You're coming out of reserve.
Motion carries.
I'll make a donation.
All right.
Mayor, I move we approve the budget as needed.
All right.
I'll suck it.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the budget. A minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so. Motion carries.
Mayor, I have a question. This doesn't affect the budget. The money that we have allotted in the budget for the library, the town library, does that have to be sent to the town supervisor?
I do not know.
We can ask.
Really, you have a question?
I don't know. We pay all the bills down here.
Well, that's my point.
All right. Let's follow up on that, town manager.
I don't want to use the library out of $1,000, but I, I would rather it stay.
Local control.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you.
We agree 100% with you.
All right. All right. Town manager will check on that, and then, um, what we'll do is.
I feel bad.
Dispense it as possible. Does anybody have a continuing business?
No. Okay, I'm sorry.
At this time, we go on to new business.
Mayor, I do have a piece of new business. Um, council, you will have received in your packet. Um, I was reading through the DHCD information that they sent us, and according to our town attorney, this is the, uh, the spot, spotlight batement procedure. It's something that we are not currently taking advantage of. Um, the Code of Virginia allows the PAPA, the town, the power to acquire, repair any blighted property by purchase or through the exercise of the power of eminent domain and shall have the power to hold, clear, repair, manage, dispose of such property. In addition, the town has the power to recover the cost of any property disposal of such property from the owner or ownership record. And I'm not going to go into the odd steps because.
I'm sorry, yeah. It's pretty, pretty exhaustive, yeah.
Um, essentially, we, the, the town manager, the mayor and the town manager determine what properties are blighted. Um, they send a letter to the owner. The owner has an opportunity to send a, um, um, a letter back saying how they're going to fix it. Uh, if it's acceptable, um, that's fine. They do it. If it's not acceptable, council then, uh, passes a, um, an ordinance declaring the property blighted. And we then have authority to, um, create our own plan for the property, um, which includes either repairing ourselves, acquiring it through eminent domain, or, or, um, or the like. And then costs associated with that are gone through with it through a lien. Um, it's similar to what we're already doing, but it's a little bit more robust. So.
This is the practice, and that was, uh, because I had some questions, Mo. Because I, I thought we already were doing this.
We're doing something differently. We're going straight to the courts for, uh, basically the eminent domain. This allows other opportunities where the property owner can say, we're, we're just going to give it to you, uh, or.
So this will save us money on the backside if they don't.
Protect the court. That's correct.
Okay. And you said Tessie reviewed that?
Um, she did. Uh, she didn't review the information. She, uh, she looked at the, um, uh, the code section and such, and said that it's something that we're not currently doing, and it sounds like a good idea. In fact, I can pull up her exact.
And I would amend it as well slightly. Well, you've got mayor. I would take town manager.
Uh, I put mayor because our, um, coordinates is identified the mayor as the chief executive and the town manager as the chief administrative officer.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And it says the mayor is chief executive. So just to be.
Sure. But the mayor can designate.
Uh, just don't do it. Absolutely, yes. Um, Tessie says, so I asked her if we, if we currently use it. She says, no, we haven't. It looks like a good way to get control of the property. It's just for repair and put a lien. The outcome is very similar to the dangerous building ordinance. And she said she's on vacation, but follow us. We have any questions?
Okay. Can, um, would you have any objection if people took this home and read it and came, bought it back next month?
Sure.
Give a chance, and then that way we could.
That'd be fine.
They have questions for Tessie, they could.
Okay.
Ask those questions.
That'd be fine.
So let's just table it till next month.
Okay.
That way, everybody's got a chance to read it.
But if we want to start making a list of such properties, then.
Yes. All right. Any other new business? So this, this, all right, go ahead.
Just thinking about things as we talked about it. So does this circumvent the, uh, building inspector? This is something entirely different.
This is something entirely different on the surface.
And the decisions will be up to whoever we designate.
That's correct.
Mr. Whaley, blinded or what?
That's correct. I would, uh, I would consult the town attorney for whatever decision we make, just to ensure that it's, uh, yes, if it's my understanding.
And we, I'd call it, I mean, that would be part of our process, I think, is to bring in the, the building inspector.
I would think so, too.
Well, it doesn't.
Well, it depends. The blighted, it says in here, I think it said it could be just something as simple as the, the tall grass.
Yeah.
It can be anything. So maybe you need a building inspector, but not everything.
That's true.
We're just, well, totally the property, the structure itself, you know, supports one of the supports.
Right.
Hey, look, you know, well, in that case, you get them. See, that's a safety issue, too, isn't it?
I just can't help but feel like it all goes back to the, to the problem. You know, we've always had things in place, whether it be the avenue we use now or this new one. To get to a point where we're telling somebody they have to do something, and if they refuse to do it, then we have to make a decision.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like, I mean, really, this only works for those people who are going to cooperate with us, because, you know, the people who aren't going to cooperate with us, it really isn't going to matter if you use this procedure that one of our reasons, right?
Yeah, and I, I know Tessie's not here, but it's not going to be that easy.
Right.
You know, if they say, well, I don't agree with what you say, and I'm not fixing it, then we can't just march in and start working on it.
But it also, I believe it also lowers the standard, because with the building inspector, it has to be specific. This is a lesser standard. I mean, it's still standard, and it's still considered light. Um, but light is different than dangerous.
And it's in state code. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't agree with, disagree with any of that, but I still think it comes down to what happens in the area, but.
It's also a quicker process, um, because you're talking about 30 days from the time we send a letter, um, they can respond, and then we simply, we just have the motion, and so within three, four months, it could be taken care of versus us.
First is a year.
Right.
If we assume the property under eminent domain.
That's more of a legal process.
Yes, but that also requires us to tear it down at our cost, to attach layer of cost.
Okay.
And if it's any asbestos, and it, or lead, and it comes a lot, well, much likely, the houses that we're looking at are probably asbestos over there.
Well, let's, let's, again, let's tell you what, and we're going to give us a chance to look into it and talk to Tessie. With any questions that anybody has, we can reach out to her, and, uh, also, uh, there's bound to be some checklist that other communities do this. If we could find some checklist, that would be great. also, uh, there's bound to be some checklist, that other communities do this, if we can find some checklist, that would be great, do you know who else does that? I mean, what, what's the?
Who uses this, I'm not sure, but we can reach back after the DHCD.
That would be great, and just to make that, this is their process, and something that we should adopt as an internal.
That would work, okay.
Alright, any, any other new business? Alright, with that in mind, we have an opportunity to say goodbye to a dear friend. Mr. Siss. The town of Crewe has a resolution commending the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. on his service to the town of Crewe. Whereas the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. was first elected to the Crewe Town Council in 2012, and twice reelected in 2014 and 2016, and whereas during his extensive service on council, the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. has served as chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and member of the Volunteer Services Committee. And whereas after graduating from Lawton High School in 2002, the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. moved away from Crewe to pursue a career, and worked as a, as a carman, a, a carman for Norfolk Southern, uh, excuse me. Didn't read that.
Didn't work really, I was scared.
For Norfolk Southern, and later on, uh, on a ground, later a groundsman for Dominion Energy. And whereas the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. moved back to Crewe in 2007 after realizing that he quote, wanted to start a family in a community where people honestly care for each other, where when going to the local store, the owner speaks to you and cares about what you want, where neighbors bring you over a cake or pie when you're new to the neighborhood, and where you know your kids' teachers and how they're helping your kids prevail in school, input, and. Whereas the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. has further served the town of Crewe and surrounding areas, as a member of the Crewe-Berkville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, member of the Board of Directors for the Crewe Railway Museum, former co-chairman of the local Norfolk Southern Safety and Service Committee, and member of Crewe Masonic Lodge 123. And whereas the Honorable Steve Siss Jr.'s accomplishments include working with the Chamber, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Park Committee to help beautify the park, leading efforts to install a regulation-sized volleyball court in town, and serving as a down-to-earth leader, not afraid to roll just sleeves and solve the issues, that's fact. And whereas the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. and his wife Tiffany have three sons, Brendan, Aiden, and David, and one daughter, Kendley, now therefore be it resolved that the Crewe Town Council does hereby congratulate the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. on his service to the people of Crewe. Call it upon all citizens of the town of Crewe to recognize his commitment to making our community a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the town of Crewe prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the Honorable Steve Siss Jr. as an expression of the town, town council's deeply held respect for his service. All in favor?
Uh, hi.
More trips, more trips, more trips.
Mayor, I do have a small gift for the, uh, the councilman. A jar of white wine.
It's not what it looks like from here.
They all came on.
Come from within town.
No, no, well, jargon for the others, but not the hundreds, not the hundreds.
Just came, you came on there to break the debate, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, uh. Alright, alright, any other new business?
You know, there was some concern about relocating this, uh, the, the little playground over here somewhere else.
Yes.
With doing, cause we having so much problems, from what I'm, I've been understanding, and, uh, I don't know where to put it, or what, you know, it's, it's been something, I'll bet, you know, with the, the park, or, uh, better, small park, whatever. Do we look into that?
Okay, uh, you want to put it in committee?
We can do that.
Alright, uh. We'll put it in the Volunteer Services Committee.
Can we still not make the library turn the wifi off after five o'clock?
Well, we have, we have checked it, and the wifi does not reach out there.
I've gotten on it, on the playground, on my phone, we might get it playing, so I can, maybe not all the time, I don't know, it depends on the weather and signal, but I know I've gotten on wifi within the playground.
Moving from lock, police station always gonna be safe, and I turned it off.
Like, we're, we're doing a good job turning it off over here, so again.
Alright.
We're talking about putting up maybe, constructing a different type fence other than the chamber entrance?
But, um, we've had some problems with the playground, we've had, the fence has been torn down, you've got adults or, or, or older teenagers going over there tearing stuff up when they're, you know, supposed to be for smaller children. Uh, and that's, that's what this is about, so, um, we'll discuss it further.
Chief and I have been talking about that a lot, much, you know, if there's any problems, we'll try to come up with some legal.
I've, I've got an idea for that, too, and it's a pretty simple solution. I know getting high-tech surveillance gear is probably expensive, but I've got a trail camera, if it takes video, you can set it for what time you want to start this, that, and the other. You get a ladder, you put it up high, whether on a flagpole or something, where nobody can get it off of there, and then somebody tears it up, then.
Is it bulletproof?
No, but if they go to get to shoot, now I would hope somebody would hear that. I'll hear it.
Did we look into the security system?
We did, we, we've talked about that.
That's the cheap way to do it, I mean, a hundred dollars for a camera to, to do that, you know.
And it's sort of like a lot of problems that we have with this type of thing, it's a matter of reinforcement, um, you know, if we shut this place down at, at dusk, say, nobody's doing anything, it's dark, and it's just a matter of watching it and keeping up with it. Really knows how hard that is.
Yeah, you don't experience, well, then you have, what time you close, and, and we go there and tear it up.
Well, let me, let me ask, let me ask you this, do you wanna look into it further, and we're just, I mean, we could literally, we could get council's approval tonight, town forces to just move it, if you think we need to move it.
Well, we, that's part of what we're talking about, too, but.
Well, anywhere you move it, you're gonna have, aren't you gonna have the same.
I think cost of moving equipment, I believe, is pretty high, the, uh, town of Berkville talked about moving the, uh, Berkville elementary equipment to town.
Yeah, it, it would be a costly.
I mean, is there where you can put it that's gonna stop that problem?
Exactly, I, I like, uh, councilman Reed's suggestion of looking into surveillance equipment.
We'll take some of the heat off of it, we got new playground equipment coming from Berkville, so we'll take some of the heat off of it, come up and tear it up.
You know, you know, everybody knows the problem is not the playground, the kids, and they were playing like they're supposed to, parents are with them, and, you know, they're not tearing up the fence, and, uh, it's the ones that do it, as usual, they ruin it for everybody. You hate to say, they, they play a lot of football and all over here in the afternoon, you hate to say, nah, you can't do that. The problem is, they leave the drink bottles, and all the trash, and it's bad.
Somebody's gotta get it and clean it up, you know.
I still think the wifi can't score a lot of.
Yeah.
And I don't see why we have such a problem to get it turned off.
I thought they said it wasn't.
Maybe they are.
The library.
Was it at the.
The library board voted, discussed that, any?
Uh, yes, um, and we decided that, um, the library is not responsible for the playground, that, that library, um, doesn't extend to the playground.
So I would suggest follow Aaron's suggestion, and we, as a town, I hate to see us punish and inconvenience people who have been enjoying the playground and doing the right thing, move it to a location that would be less convenient for them to walk small children.
I don't think anybody's arguing that the library has any liability, I'm just curious as to what the objection is by the library to turn it off the wifi when the library closes, why not turn it off?
I couldn't tell you that, you'd have to consult the, um, IT person for the library, on that one.
Alright, well, who's, who's head of the library board?
Pardon?
Who's, who's in charge of the library board?
Connie Scott.
Can, can, you got her number?
I imagine.
One thing that the rents of the library has done, we are funding, um, hotspots, so that people can check them out and not have to hang around after hours here. Not too sure how many, we might have, it's probably ten or eleven.
Well, the people that are gonna rent a hotspot, I'm checking, they're gonna be.
Exactly.
Just this past week, we threw it out without, we had a lecture about it, we took it out.
Yeah.
Do you need Connie's number?
I'll get it, I'll, I'll get it.
Okay, cause I can get it to you, but just not right now.
That's alright, I'll get it.
Okay.
I agree with Erin, trying to get the wifi going as well, because right next to my office, and, and the kids leave the trash things, you know.
I don't see why that's an issue, I really don't.
Do you have the trash can out there?
We don't, there's several.
Yeah, I mean, they forgot it, I, I'll tell you, I came by the party yesterday, telling you, good job cleaning up, cause it was a lot of trash down there, everybody. You gotta use, the trash cans are there, but if you don't use them, they're no good.
Well, I still say, I hate to see us punish all the people who are doing the right thing if it's, um, matter of trash.
Okay.
Could you beef up the control?
Sir?
Could you beef up the police patrol, so, for that, that way, have a little more eyes.
Well, they do, I mean, they, they patrol, they patrol here.
I ain't said they didn't, I said beef it up.
They may have picked up the pace on that, yeah.
Point's personal, just to ask a question.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, mention that the chicken festival is coming up on June the twenty-second at four o'clock at the, uh, Cooper Park. Um, so everyone come out and enjoy chicken and libations.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, and even though it rains in all of Crewe last year, it was not raining at the park.
That's right.
So even if it's raining at Crewe Station, definitely come by the, uh, park and see if it's raining, uh, if rain scares you. Um, and I also wanted to, uh, just mention, it's, it's been, you know, six years for some of us, um, councilman Siss, Vice Mayor, um, and there's been a lot of improvements over the last, uh, six years, uh, thanks to the, uh, the town manager and the town clerk, and, uh, and all the, all the town staff, uh, the water quality has improved immensely, um, our oil reports are amazing, it's a lot of good news tonight, and, uh, and we owe the town staff a, a lot for that.
Good comment, Mr. Abrams. Uh, could we get the highway department to hit the drop boxes again last night, four sixty was terrible. I came through it, the rain, and some of these drop boxes stopped up and were everywhere, and I mean.
Lot of water failed, too.
Yeah, a lot of deep water, where the drop boxes clogged up, I'm like, see if you can get clean. Town manager will take that for accident.
Tonight, uh, I really don't have anything.
Mr. Kenson?
Come by the library at eleven-thirty on Thursday, the fourteenth, um, it's the thirtieth birthday of the Crewe Library, it's also Flag Day. So there'll be free ice cream, as long as it lasts, so.
Okay.
Has it been here thirty years?
Uh-huh.
Will it roll wifi?
On eleven-thirty.
Mr. Reed?
I'm gonna pray with you.
Mr. Siss?
Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody, thank you to my wife, um, she supported me and keeping me up to date a lot. Wendy, thank you for the, helping me with the volleyball and, and a bunch of other stuff, and y'all guys, thank y'all. Another thing I wanna talk about is just getting paid. The meeting prior to me getting, on the council, we were getting paid five hundred dollars a year, they butted against it, well, butted to stop getting paid. The meeting prior to me leaving, y'all started getting paid again, so. I'll see y'all in two years. I'll see y'all in two years.
You want to come now?
Thank y'all, again, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your services, I mean, you, you've served in more ways than one. Alright, now we're back in public comments, any public comments at this time? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Mr. Smith?
Well, bringing some hope and news again, your wife had called the EPA for that, that shit, that, that drainage, did she put it in the back of the yard?
Yeah.
And I don't know, they, they got contact with y'all about that, not.
They have not.
Yeah, but he said he did, he sent it out to the town, and, um, new, the, the, the situation that was down there, has a problem.
Did they send it to the town or to the county?
Uh, it ain't even here, it fell away, cause the bedhead was on the property.
Do you have a copy of the town, or a copy of the letter?
No, I don't have a copy of that, cause the only thing what she did, came up, is she checked it out.
Did you, did you see a letter?
The first time, the second time, she had talked to Tony. And then that was, that, that, she called in, and it came up, they looked at it.
What's the problem?
It's the drains, that y'all put in the, in the background from that, from that alley.
Huh? It's not raining?
It's not raining, but it's holding mosquitoes.
Okay.
And that's the problem, what I have, the problem was, it's holding mosquitoes. And right now, you know, the situation with mosquitoes, and they, they get, and, and answered on the news, that a lot of mosquitoes, can, a lot of disease, cephalitis, and, uh, vi, viruses and everything else, and it's not good.
I'm curious, the health department told you, they didn't have anything to do with that?
I didn't say that they didn't have anything to do, I said EPA, they are biometric, but they're the ones that check things out, see if, if biometric things are by this apartment, have.
Did you talk to a federal or a state?
I talked to the people from there, and, and.
Health partner, I guess.
They said, and she said, they sent a note to them, I said, they said they talked to somebody in, in the town, in the town hall or something. The last time they came, they talked to Tony, about, he said, well, there's a problem. So I'm just bringing that forward, you know.
We'll follow, follow.
Because I'm just saying, you know, in, in the region, here's a problem, and you know, before we talked about that, we got all that thing in there. But I feel, you know, before this town council came into, came to meeting, the other town councils should have did their homework, because they, before they started that project down on the alley. I checked into all of that, and I talked to different people about that.
We had an ample opportunity, we had public meetings, we had engineers there, the engineer did the work.
Yeah, I know the engineer did the work, but I'm just saying, they should have checked into the situation before they made all this, all this decision they made. Some of the decisions they made, that like y'all talking about, the, the alley, that the, that the state was gonna take over the alley, which caused the, they didn't, they're not.
Alright, Mr. Smith, thank you, sir, I'll go look into this.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, cause like I said, cause like I said before, he said, the time, and all the time, like they were talking about that, coming into the alley, and talking about the eminent domain stuff that we were talking about. And the only way they could do that on private property, it had to be a, it had to be a public right of way, public right of way, not private property, but public right of way, and order for them to get eminent domain on. And what's going, which y'all stated the alley was a private alley, keeping that living alley, owning alley, because that's what part of it, y'all. And that's the only way to get domain, and the only reason they sent it, paying back and saying that they're gonna get that eminent, if they had to make it a public thing, so that you, the bus turn around, the bus turn around, have that thing to get, get this done. Like I said, I got through my homework, but I'll be back with this town council in a few weeks, two weeks, because like, there's all stuff in, in the making, so I'm just checking it now, letting you know.
Thank you, sir, give our regards to your missus.
Will.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, I attended the meeting the Luckstone put on.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for maybe the three people in the room that don't know me, my name's Baxter Stegall, Double Tennessee Avenue. Um, I liked what I saw, I thought they put on a good presentation, but I've been known to investigate things further.
Yes.
So I spoke to Mr. Riley, who's the project manager, um, he's invited me up to Goochland, to their, tour their, um, their main headquarters, and then the quarry there in Goochland, it's one of the newer ones.
Right.
And so I'm probably gonna go up sometime in early July and, and do a tour during the week, I was gonna extend an invitation to anyone who'd like to go with me, to tour, um, not only the plant, the headquarters, but the neighborhoods nearby, maybe knock on a couple of doors and ask what do they like, not like about living next to the quarry, kinda see what it might be like if they were to build one here, so I just offer to extend.
And just give us the date, so we can spread it around for a while, the folks will let them know.
Yes, sir.
And we'll, we'll see what's, you know, who's available.
Yes, sir, but, and, and members, whoever might want to go, we convoy up to Goochland and go on a field trip.
Sounds like a good idea, I, I, I talked to a gentleman from Apothomatics, uh, about two weeks ago, who lives right next to the quarry, there, he says, says, they're the best neighbors he's ever had. Said they're very quiet, very professional. Any other comment? Very good, with that in mind, uh, there's no need for an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Tonight, and second on Mr. Siss, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all like so.